All right, good morning. I'd like to welcome everyone to the Axerson County Commission meeting for Tuesday, August twentieth. Like to call the meeting to order if you please stand and join Mr. Kornode for on vacation.
Thank you for inviting me here this morning. I wonder if you stayed up last night watching the politicians on television last night. I would tell you that I did, and I'm kind of excited about what I heard last night. And I want to talk about that for a minute and come to a scripture that relates to that. What I heard last night was praise after praise after praise for a man, even a man praising himself for what he's done. He never thanked the Lord for what he has accomplished or what he's been put in position to do. It was all about him. I'm reminded of a king named Herod that's in the twelfth chapter of the book of Acts. Who people were praising him greatly and he praised himself and Acts records an angel of the Lord struck him with worms. The secular historian Josephus said, when Herod got sick, he died of worms in five days. We heard maybe something like that last night. I even heard Christian principles that being cited. That a principle that Moses taught that's in the book of Deuteronomy that says everyone should give according to their ability to give. I heard it twisted so much last night that it said, we think some are more equal than others. Therefore, they should pay a higher tax. Not everybody's created equal is the principle that I heard being announced last night. I'm kind of excited about that because that's so much different than what I read in Psalm number two. Listen to these words from the second song. Why are the nations so angry? Why did they waste their time with futile plans? The kings of the earth prepare for battle, the rulers plot together against the Lord and against his anointed one. Let us break their chains, they cry, and free ourselves from slavery to God. But the one who rules in heavens laughs, the Lord scoffs at them. Then in anger, he rebukes them, terrifying them with his fierce fury. For the Lord declares, I have placed my chosen king on the throne in Jerusalem on my holy hill. The king proclaims the Lord's decree. The Lord said to me, you are my son. Today I have become your father. Only ask and I will give you the nations as your inheritance, the whole earth as your possessions. You will break them with an iron rod and smash them like clay pots. Now then, you kings act wisely. Be warned, you rulers of the earth. Serve the Lord with fervent fear and rejoice with trembling. Submit to God's royal son, or he will become angry and you'll be destroyed in the midst of your activities. For his anger flares up in an instance, but what a joy for all who take refuge in him. Now with me in prayer, please. Father, I pray for the commissioners here today that they will remember that you have called them to this place and to this work and this time. I pray, Father, that they will honor you with the decisions that they make. I pray that you will be centermost in in our continual thinking because you are the one in charge. Thank you, Father, that you have created us and thank you that you have given us the opportunity to make choices for ourselves. I pray, Father, that we will continually make the choice to follow you. That we will exalt you and honor and glorify you above every other thing, every other person, every other institution. In our Lord's Jesus name I pray, amen.
Amen. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, public comment. Seeing none. We will approve the minutes for last week, next week. Commissioner comments, Commissioner Rebus?
I don't think I have anything.
Okay. Commissioner Noel?
I don't have anything.
I don't either. New business, we have Mark Ziltner, Finance Director with the second half county appropriations and a purchase order approval. I was going to give it to Joey, I don't know where to.
It's it's actually in the closet there.
Okay.
I'm not sure where you guys wanted to put that, but yeah, we can add it to the the room. So these are the second half of the twenty twenty four county appropriations. We the larger appropriations, I like to split in half because we the taxes, there's more money that come in at the second half, so we don't have to all pay them out at the first half at the beginning of the year. So there's a purchase order for every one of them. This one's to Achievement Services for twenty four thousand. You want me to just read them all or just hand them to you or?
Uh, let's just do them individually really quick.
Sounds great.
I looked for a motion to approve the purchase order to Achievement Services out of County General for twenty four thousand. It's for the second half of the twenty twenty four county appropriation, which the total amount was forty eight thousand. Do you have a motion to approve?
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passes three to zero.
Now, you read them so well.
Oh, thanks.
On on these, if there's taxes that are outstanding or there's, do they get their full appropriation or do they?
They do get the full appropriation.
Yeah, okay. Um, I was thinking on some departments, don't they have to take a less amount because until that is paid, until the like back taxes are paid?
Hmm.
I was thinking that.
Do we have appropriations that happen? I guess I wasn't aware of that.
Yes, it happened. I was thinking that.
It happens if it's a different taxing, it'd be like a cemetery or something like that. They just get their mill levy. And so if people don't pay, we don't make up the difference.
Well, I said.
That's where. So they just get the amount that is actually paid by the.
So you're talking about extension? Because it's a mill of its own mill?
It is.
Yeah, so that would be the only one that, right? That would have its own mill?
Okay, out of all these, yes.
That would be from the ones that had, okay.
Right.
Okay. Well, I just seen that the full figure there, so it's kind of like it was triggered something.
I think about seven, eight years ago, that used to happen frequently. Because we would only give them, because so many of them had their own fund and we could only pay them what they had. We couldn't put them in the negatives, so we could also pay them what they had. So some of them didn't get their hundred percent, but it was all very close.
So now they're under the general.
Now they're under general.
So maybe that's what it's.
Okay.
The old stuff coming back.
Yeah, so they also, to to piggyback on what Michelle said, in the county workbook that the state builds. If um, if there is something like that occurs, such as the Extension Council is the only one in these. Um, if when we do the county workbook and we plug in how much taxes are needed, that a hundred and sixty eight thousand and some change. Um, that's that's saying how much we're going to give them. If for any reason, because we have to put in two years prior, two years numbers prior to to the current year. So it looks at how much was collected in each of those years. So if there's delinquency, where there's not enough collected to say what we're going to pay out, it adds in more by itself to make up the difference.
Oh.
So from year to year, it changes. So you may say you want to levy a hundred and sixty eight thousand, it might be a hundred and sixty nine or a hundred and sixty, depending on whatever it is. So it changes itself.
Kind of an income averaging type thing.
Yeah, so we won't have to ever worry about it. Because it adds it up and. Yeah.
And levies the correct amount?
Yeah.
Interesting.
So if we collect more for next year, we would levy less the following year.
Okay.
Or vice versa.
Nice.
Yeah, that all does its adjustment at the end when we're done. And that's kind kind of comes into when Michelle does the the November valuations, it also takes that into consideration as well. Um, the second one is to the Axerson County Conservation District for fifteen thousand, seven hundred and fifty nine dollars.
Okay. I'd like to look for a motion to approve purchase order as presented by our finance director. Do I have a motion to?
Some.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes three to zero.
That means we'll probably be entered for payment around the September fourth accounts payable. So not not next week, but the week after. Uh, the third one is to the Extension Council for eighty four thousand, two hundred and sixty seven dollars.
Promotion to approve uh, the purchase order as presented by the finance.
Two. Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passes three to zero.
Um, the next one is to Northeast Kansas Multi-County Health Department with forty thousand dollars even.
Promotion to approve the purchase order as presented by the finance director. Moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
This is three to zero.
The next one is to Project Concern for sixty two thousand, five hundred dollars.
That's a promotion to approve this purchase order for Project Concern as presented by the finance director.
Two. Sorry.
Moved and seconded, all those in favors say aye.
Aye.
Passes three to zero.
This, um, there's two here to the Guidance Center, but this first one is to the Guidance Center for the Regional Crisis Center for five thousand dollars even.
Promotion to approve the purchase order as presented by the finance director for the Crisis Stabilization Center to the Guidance Center.
Two.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passes three just.
And then this one's also to the Guidance Center, but for the mental health portion of twenty five thousand dollars even.
The promotion to approve the purchase order as presented from the finance director for the appropriation to the Guidance Center for Mental Health.
Two. Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passes three to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is Road and Bridge. Joe's not here today, so he asked me if I could do his purchase orders. Is that okay to?
Yeah.
Move to that?
Next, yep.
Okay. I don't, I think he sent an email to you guys, but this this first one is to be paid out of that leftover allocation that we sent to Road and Bridge. It's to Dillon Tire for truck seventy seven Bridgestone tires in the amount of two thousand, five ninety eight, forty eight.
You're trying to part the ARP allocation.
Correct, yeah.
But we already go.
Right.
We're just spending down.
Spending down, yeah, correct.
Hey, I've looked for a motion to approve the purchase order to Dillon Tire as presented by our finance director in the amount of two thousand, five hundred and ninety eight dollars, forty eight cents.
Some of it's safe.
Um, real quick discussion, did they tell it, did he, oh, it's behind here, never mind, it's for two. I was just wondering the quantity of it then, but, um, okay, so it's been consecrated, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passes three to zero.
The ones from the back now.
Um.
Which equipment, wasn't it, the road grader?
No, it's truck seventy seven.
And it's kind of too tired.
Okay. And they're twenty two five, so that would.
That's a heavy truck, yeah.
Yeah. Amazing. Oh, tires are horrible. Had about two steps within that two months.
Hmm.
Yeah, this front tractor tires, about three hundred dollars a piece.
Yeah.
The back with your little boy. Oh, three thousand.
Um, this next one is to Pruitt Construction. Um, it's the final invoice for Colbert and Low Water Crossing at two hundred and fiftieth. For sixty one thousand, two seventy six, sixty five.
Look for a motion to approve the purchase order as presented by our finance director to Pruitt Construction for the final invoice for Colbert at Low Water Crossing, two hundred and fiftieth. Um, and for the amount of sixty one thousand, two seventy six, sixty five.
So move. Say it.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passes three to zero.
This next one is to Vance Brothers for Durapatch Oil. There's several invoices and they look to be all to different road segments. Um, like Bourbon and two sixty second for Ottawa and two thirtieth. So it looks like they've ordered multiple times because they needed more. So we made one purchase order for all of the different invoices. So it's to Vance Brothers for Durapatch Oil in the amount of a hundred and six thousand, five hundred and fourteen oh nine.
This might be. I'm not sure if you know the process, I was trying to remember. We send our tank down, correct, and get it filled?
I don't know.
No, they they brought.
That says they was delivered.
Yeah.
On those invoices.
Then they offloaded. Then, yeah, we we take off, we don't want any more than we can use during that day.
Okay, so that's why there's multiple trips, multiple deliveries.
Yeah, and one day changed it to. Yeah.
Did we, you, I felt like we used to send our something.
We do both. We have done both. Sometimes we'll send a truck and sometimes. I think if there's, uh, especially later in the fall, when we're just doing patching, we can send a truck down to get it because we got the time. They don't usually start first thing in the morning.
Gotcha.
But when they're doing, wanting to get a full day in, the truck's waiting there at eight. They come in and that day that you're speaking of, it rained or had some sprinkles, so they had to start later that day. And I think that was last Monday, and so they were just going to figure on getting two loads. They yeah, started later, so. And it can bring a bigger load than we can haul in our truck, so they can bring it up and we can keep rolling, so it makes sense. I don't know what the delivery fee cost is.
It's it's over five hundred dollars up top.
Well, but.
Each time.
By the time we get a bigger truck and we pay a guy to go down and get it, it makes trips and it was the time of waiting, we'd have to have two trucks.
No.
Or.
I think that'd be, it'd be interesting to see a cost analysis, because like.
I think I just gave it to you.
No, I mean, they're sending multiple, I mean, I don't know. I pay freight on things, that was the business I used to be in, I don't know, that just seems, you want to look at it before we? I mean, we have.
And maybe that's something we talk about, maybe getting a R P on, you know, lock price, we're making. It's a little bit less.
Absolutely.
I mean, it's like we're looking at.
Mm hmm.
It's closer to the plant, it would help.
Yeah.
For a storage, I mean, I don't know, there what what the options are, but it'd be nice to just get creative and look at. Because that's a lot.
Yeah. Well, that's right, I mean, I'll have to.
Yeah.
I'll do a little more about it, what we're doing right now, it's gonna be all now.
Okay.
What was the total again?
Um, one hundred and six thousand, five hundred and fourteen dollars and nine cents.
Thank you.
All right, so I'd look for a motion to approve the purchase order to Vance Brothers out of ARPA funds for one hundred and six thousand, five hundred and fourteen dollars and nine cents. I have a motion to.
So move. Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passes.
My understanding is all the chip and seal's done now, is that right, do you know?
I don't know.
Okay. I think it should be, maybe it's a little bit, I think it should be. Based on what it said before.
Mm hmm. Yeah, it was out last week and it all happened.
Weather delayed it a little bit, so.
Yeah. Okay, that's all I have for the purchase orders, and I think someone else was going to cover the next topic. I don't know if that was Pat or.
On the.
Two fourteenth and Lincoln?
Yeah.
Oh.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, the there was a, I don't know how much background you want, but um, it used to be the case that it was the county's responsibility to put up all of the regulatory road signs on township roads. Uh, that that is stop signs, speed limit signs, et cetera. There was a Kansas Supreme Court case several years ago where someone had sued because of a lack of a regulatory sign. And the Supreme Court found that the county was not responsible. And and response to that, the legislature amended the statute to make clear that townships do have the responsibility to put up regulatory signs, regulatory signs like signs that you can get a ticket for disobey. Stop signs, speed limit signs, no parking, things like that. And so this, uh, this intersection at two two four, what is it, two fourteenth and yeah.
Lincoln.
And Lincoln, both of those roads are township roads. And Joe had reached out to to LTAP about it, and they sent an engineer up and looked through it and came up with a study and recommendations, and I think you were provided with a copy of that. And then also had a discussion with me and did a little research and kind of figured that's not I, which comes to shove, you probably don't have the authority to place a sign there or to order a sign there, but it's township's responsibility now. And so my suggestion is to send the uh, the report that's been generated to the township and let them know this is what's been suggested and to make the recommendation to them that they do what they think is appropriate to to fix it, so.
With township, with some.
Center.
Center, yeah.
I'm glad you knew that, because I wasn't.
I was going to guess center, it seems like it would be.
Yeah, and they've been involved in the conversation from the beginning when the constituent brought it to our attention, so.
That's the one that we've been talking about, that's bad sight line?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Yeah, it's an unusual intersection.
So may I ask a question in the future? Does the county need any involvement then, or does the township have the authority to contact LTAP themselves and do the investigation, I guess?
I think they probably could have contacted them directly. Uh, Joe might have better or more resources or phone numbers to call and, you know, that bigger Rolodex, if you will. Uh, but yeah, I think they could probably reach out on their own.
Okay, so the county wouldn't need to be involved in in that, as long as it's both township roads?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, because Nelda is the one that presented at the township meeting and gave them all her contacts, so they should all have.
Yeah, I was going to say she was there.
And she's who did the, who came up and met with with him, so.
I think I made a roundabout there.
I didn't hear you. But okay, so Joe's going to send it to them?
Um.
Or you're going to send it to them?
Yeah, I wasn't, I didn't realize this was on the agenda today, but I had talked to him about notifying the the township back. We didn't have a discussion about who was going to do it.
Okay.
So I'll I'll make sure with him, I'll probably just grab something for him instead. So it seems to be the easiest, because then if they have questions, if they ask them back to me, I probably not going to answer.
Well, you just have them carbon copy you and I on it, so we know it's done, because I mean, I, they've had me on the correspondence from the very beginning, and then I can just know it's done. If anybody asks like, well, it was sent to you on, you know, just the, it's closed, so that'd be great. And I have their emails, if you need them, I can send them to you for all three of the board members. Steve, Adam, and Colin.
I'll ask you kind of a sideways question here, so by the fact we've had this study done now. So if the township says, well, thank you very much, so we're going to, we don't want to do it. Is there any incurred liability on their part of the cities or the county's part versus if if nothing has changed at the intersection?
Well, you're asking two questions.
I know.
Um, is there liability on the county if nothing's done? No. Um, and that was the per, that was really the the result of the Supreme Court decision. Uh, that doesn't mean the city, the county wouldn't be involved in a lawsuit if there was one. But I I think we'd be protected by the Kansas Court Claims Act on it. It would be a discretionary function for the township on which choice to take, but I don't think they have the freedom to just say, we're not going to do anything. Okay. Um, but they don't necessarily have to do what was suggested. So is it, so i- is it, it's an uncontrolled intersection now? Is that right?
Um, that's two way.
It's two way.
Two ways, okay. Uh, and they're, they've suggested four way. I I don't know if there would be liability if they decided to keep it that way, but they're more familiar with it, they'd say, let's just give them the opportunity to think it through and decide what they think is best, but that's brilliant, I think all we can do, because if you're not happy with the decision they make, you don't have any authority over them to make them change it.
Hey, thank you. Is that, you're good?
That's, that's all I have, yeah.
Okay, so we're headed scheduled, but um, next on the agenda is per Commissioner Noel's request. Says toll, but it's tow service contracts.
Okay, well, this is just kind of a general conversation, because uh, I guess it was about three and a half months ago when we rescinded the resolution that named the two uh, tow companies that were on call for services. Their services via dispatch, and at the time I was a little concerned that we weren't going to consider creating a new resolution, naming the 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 new business that was interested in or taking of being in on that too. So it's now spent three and a half months later and it hasn't happened, I mean, basically running without anything. The, I've seen emails from the the new company saying, what's taken so long? So I there was, there was a few things said in those emails, one was that I I didn't like, I guess the tenor of it was the, they said, well, someone may incur the wrath of the two existing uh, tow companies by adding another one, because they're going to do less business. Well, I didn't think that was a a prerequisite that that they dictate that no one else will ever get in on county business. I thought that was a poor choice of of uh, wording or even you know, it's it's like we make the decisions or it's made the decisions on what's good for the county, not that current clients are telling us that they don't want anybody else involved. So that was one thing I didn't like. And then it also said that it was evident that the commissioners didn't want any their hands on it. Basically, we were washing our hands of that and it was going to be in someone else's hands. Well, I had concerns three and a half months ago, and I think maybe it's, we ought to reconsider making it into resolution for. So I just thought I'd bring it up for uh, discussion again to see, um, I I have no stake in the game, because I don't know the new company, I don't have any business, I've never done business with any of them, so I have no that is a friend or crony of mine or of of any of them. So I I just kind of wondered why it took three and a half, why it's taking this long, if it's waiting on contracts or or is I couldn't exactly tell by those emails. I couldn't exactly tell by those emails whether the new company was gonna be offered a contract or whether. So maybe Pat, maybe you can tell me a little bit about the end of it.
Well, there there was not any pushback. From either express. Express Loop and RNS are the two that have. Record services established in the city that have been on the. Backing up even further. Dispatch has two lists, a list for tow. For wrecker services within the city of Atchison and outside the city of Atchison. And that's the list if. There's an accident and there's either not a, an owner available, like if the owner is injured and is removed to uh. By ambulance and the vehicle's left there, what do we do with it, or if. Uh, an unattended vehicle is struck and is, needs to be moved or. Uh, the situation where an owner is there, but doesn't express any preference on who they want to do the tow. Um, then they go to a list, a predetermined list, so. Anytime that somebody's involved in an accident and. Uh, they're given the choice of what record service they want to use if the vehicle needs to be towed. Uh, but if there is no preference or there's no one there to state a preference. The. Dispatch. Has a list uh, that they use on a rotating week by week basis. And that was for many years, just two companies, and so you're on one week and off a week. And if somebody was gonna come on vacation, I guess they should organize that with each other, but. That very rarely happened apparently. Um, when when this came up, um, I talked with the sheriff and we talked about trying to get, trying to figure out what the standards were. Uh, for example, we would always wanna have the services insured, well, those are both companies that. I haven't checked, but I'm pretty sure that they already maintain insurance. Um, so, um, I. I reached out to the two of them that were already on the list and we got some. Uh, kind of talked about. What they were doing to make sure that we had all of those things included in a draft of an agreement, and also that we weren't imposing. Some standard that would. Like look fair and sound fair, but wasn't fair, only one of them could meet, or that, you know, possibly an outside. Someone else that was interested in being on the list couldn't meet. And then we came up with a uh, with a draft of an agreement. We circulated that to um, with the city and we just, Jack and I discussed it. And then it it came back that the uh, the city wasn't interested in being part of that agreement. They have a, an ordinance on wrecker services that has their standards of what they want. And they, the the chief of police felt that their interests were adequately protected by that. Uh, by that ordinance, and so they didn't wanna be part of the uh, of of an agreement. And so we re, I redrafted the agreement, it didn't take very long to. Uh, once I got started with that redraft to to make the change, but it took a while before I started on the redraft of it. After it was redrafted, I did send it out to all three of the. Expected wrecker respondents to uh. The the three companies that we thought would be interested in providing wrecker services. Uh, but have not yet had any response, but that was sent out very recently, yesterday. So. I I'm not sure I'd expect a response this quickly, but uh, it was sent out to all three of them. Um, and to the sheriff. So.
Okay, yeah, that's one thing I've. Had gotten some of those emails that were circulating and it was just, I thought. It's three and a half months, I, you know, that's the reason I put it on here, I had no. Beef, other than it's just seemed like it's been. Uh, quite a while, and then it's like, well, if, yeah, I guess if it's pending. I I, I'm okay with that, I was just, you know, we're in the era when we've been as the commissioners. Trying to send out RFPs and include local businesses and and everything on other contracts. Throughout the county, and I was just kind of worried that this was maybe being handled a different way, so. It's kind of my thought process.
Just curious, you know, um. There's been a couple times that they've had the um, the the big records in, like the semis and heavy equipment, they come out of Platte City, so. It's had a separate list they called or.
Um, no, I don't think they have a list for that, the the two that I talked to said that. By administrative rule, they can't go above, and I'm probably getting the weight wrong, but I'm thinking it was twelve thousand. Pounds, if what they're towing is bigger than that, they're not licensed for it. But, a- and that they weren't, neither of them were interested in providing those.
Those are nonsters, those semi wreck trucks.
Yeah, wow, he made a dump truck terrible behind my house, and they're gonna build my house, and they had two of those guys out of Platte City, killing those big wreckers to get turned over. It's pretty wild.
So they, they had a limit to what they would do.
So apparently they have access to call, because they must be, they've really called them in, so I've seen them before, so, yeah.
And and also, I would think the bigger. The drivers of the big trucks are probably more likely to know who they want to be there to tell than.
Right.
You or I. I'm not sure I have any idea who to call, or I know both of those names, those are.
Yeah, yeah. Certainly it's going forward right now.
It it is, yeah. And and we didn't talk about the reason for having. Any sort of standard is you don't want surprises for people who don't really have a say, and you know, they don't have the op. Opportunity, maybe even to do research about how should I, what's the most efficient way to do this tow? Uh, you don't want surprises for them with the bill, you don't want one vendor charging. A thousand dollars to do the tow and another charging a hundred dollars to do the tow and just say. Well, I'm sorry, you got the short end of that stick, so you wanna have some uniformity in the services that they provide at the cost. Uh, you wanna make sure that uh, they're not going to have to drive to Topeka. To get their vehicle or to get the stuff out of their vehicle, you you want that to be within the closest proximity and those sorts of things. And that's what's addressed within the agreement.
Yeah, I hadn't heard of anything that would knock them out of contention, so you know, it's kind of like, okay, well, that's not the the hangout. So.
I didn't send the draft of the agreement to you, I could send it to the three of you if you're interested in.
I don't know if I can, if you want to, sure, go ahead.
I don't really need a copy.
Okay, yeah, I'll send it. I'll send it to Commissioner Noel.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, so next on the agenda is an executive session scheduled, so we'll move on beyond that. Michelle, are you okay to do the sports conference?
I just put the copies in there, um, we did get both. Um, I'll say up and USD three seventy sevens, sports maintenance request, and I put it down with the name.
Perfect. Okay, so I would look for a motion to allow the chair to sign. The written request for management and operating reserve fund. Third quarter. Maintenance for USD three seventy seven in the amount of twenty five hundred dollars. And for ASAF in Atchison in the amount of ten thousand dollars. So the total amount to be paid from this fund is twelve thousand five hundred dollars for the third quarter maintenance and operating payments.
Some of, I'm sorry.
All right, move in a second, all those in favor say aye. Three to zero.
You know, moving forward, is it necessary to vote on that necessarily, if it's a contracted? Amount and it's kind of a routine.
I believe it is your option to pay or not pay.
Is that how it's set up? Okay, I was curious, seemed like, suck the light and really gonna pay any, I mean, it's a setup bill.
Right. Okay, so next on the agenda, Cory had sent us the Atchison County EMS monthly commission. Uh, report for July of twenty twenty four, to have a motion to um, approve and file. Receive and file. Moved in second, and all those in favor say aye. Passes three to zero.
Since we got plenty of time, just a little bit of an aside, we signed those abatements earlier, I guess that's what you. Did you notice the large amounts on those, that was an exceptional, I know sometimes we sign, but. There's some very large, which takes away from our tax base, so that's gonna affect taxes for twenty twenty five. So. I had visited with Michelle and uh, the appraiser last week a little bit about it, but I mean, it's it's standard. You know, it's not anything we have a choice in, but. Lot of times it's a boat and it makes, or something like that, when you sign it and it's six hundred dollars or either way, this, when it's. Hundred thousand plus, you know, it. That makes you. Double take. So I I I just wanna make sure you guys were aware or you. Of that, so, okay.
Okay. Next uh, is ARPA update, which we've had on there um. On a, on a weekly basis, just to.
I I have something, if you.
Okay.
So. Uh, after. Uh, some of the. Invoices came in for items that you've already um, approved, such as some of those converged ones for IT, the CPR machines. Um, the ambulance, those kind of things. After paying those. And some other forecasting items, which we can always go through again. We're down to two hundred and seventy nine thousand nine hundred dollars left. Unallocated. And some of that might change. We, I have a placeholder hand, uh, the AC compressor and a new AC unit, you guys have not approved that. To come out of ARPA, you just kind of. Put it in there. If we take those out. We're done, I'm pretty, you wanna go ahead, but that's about five hundred thousand if you take those.
Would you mind sending us the updated spreadsheet? Just so we can look at what's included and what's not.
I should do that right now. It's on its way. Um, so when you open it up. It's the yellow tab, the very first tab will have. Everything in it. Um, there, there are other tabs, but that's just more for tracking. Um, other totals. So like, there's a ruined bridge, six, 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 oh, five, eight, that's how much we allocated a ruined bridge, so out of that. How much has he spent down? Out of the six, six, eight, so five, eight, so. But that yellow tab is what. The forecasted totals will be in there.
And the graphic panel came in not much less, it's it's paid in full or not?
It's not paid in full, we'll only pay the first installment.
So it will be that difference? Okay.
I've not heard anything from courts about renovations, I don't know how that's going.
Did we get word back that this survey got, was completed? Did you hear?
I didn't hear that it was completed, I got word back that they had everything they needed except. LIDAR data. Uh, but the LIDAR data wasn't. To complete the whole project, but they didn't need the LIDAR to do the. Uh, the survey for the legal prescriptions, and I hadn't heard that it was completed.
I saw, they were working last week on that.
That's what they were scheduled to complete it last week.
I saw them out there.
Okay, good.
Um, that would have probably been Thursday when I saw them.
So then, once we have that. And you'll set that up with, will Keith Wilson come here during a meeting and we do it, or how does that work? I've never, I mean, we've never done this with a com, as a commission. I mean, I.
We've always just signed the things here and taken them.
Okay, and then they'll take them to the city and have the city sign, okay. Okay. Cuz we've already voted on it in the public meeting and it's been.
The the only other closing that I can remember that we did were selling those two vacant lots, though. So I don't know if they'll want something more formal than that.
Okay, so we should be ready to get that done.
Closing over the buyer, was the last time that happened?
What's that?
What's the last time we had closing that were the buyer?
Yeah, I. When we bought the county lake.
Um, I I don't know if you guys talked about it last Monday or not with the IT director. But there was a placeholder of that sixty six, eight, twenty five. Uh, for IT projects from the TS Connor Day opening, I don't know, was that moving forward? That's, it's not, so that can be removed, yes. So if that's removed. Keeping the. The jail's AC unit, you're about three hundred and forty. Six thousand eight hundred dollars of unallocated.
You're gonna revise the number on the AC unit based on the estimate today?
I can do that.
At least it'll be closer.
Which I need to visit with. There was a contract that Design Mechanical had sent me, but it's a contract with. Not the county. And Design Mechanical, it's a contract with KU, and Design Mechanical, we cannot, that will not satisfy. The ARPA request, it has to be between Atchison County and Design Mechanical, so. Something else will have to be developed.
They modify that, yeah.
If you guys go down that road. So, of these. I don't know if that sixteen thousand, that AC compressor, I, I don't know if that's an accurate number. Cuz when Jack was here.
We're gonna pay for a PC unit that we're not gonna.
For the compressor, you know, it's working right now.
So now, with using the. The number that we were given in the packet today from the AC unit. What's left in ORPA is about three hundred and sixty five thousand three hundred dollars. But the, some of these things on this list are gonna have to get. Wrapped up pretty soon, um, the sheriff has outfitting to patrol cars. I don't know how long that takes, but it needs to get going.
Is that included?
It is, thirty three thousand one thirty four. Is that, he estimated it to be sixteen, five, sixty seven each.
Mark, could we consider maybe on your spreadsheet at this time, to maybe create a third category of. ARPA expenses under contract? So maybe as some of those things, you can pin down a contract on. You can actually. Show them, it'd be like county expense items, so it's big, that might make it easier to separate this.
Yeah, maybe that.
Like maybe the sheriff's cars, maybe that's one of those where, at least you can get a number.
And then everything above that forecasted is what has been physically paid.
The GIS printer upgrade, we've already paid for that, haven't we? Oh, okay.
We have pre-approved the purchase order up to that amount. Um, the appraiser was going to uh get that done. All the IT things in here have been. Uh, either on order or completed, we're just waiting for the invoice to come in, so.
Oh, yeah.
Not waiting for anything on IT related, like there's a sixty seven hundred dollar item in there, but we're just waiting for the invoice.
Yeah, same with EMS stuff, so.
Just waiting for the invoice to come in.
So yeah, several of these are gonna drop off Friday next week, if any, so. Okay.
And so I know we're dwindling down both on time and money, um, so I just wanna reiterate that I I am still in favor, I think, once. If we can close on that property, what's your anticipated timeframe? Pat, have you checked with O'Keefe as far as like if survey is done, that's the only thing we're waiting on, can we get it done yet this month? Or September, I'm just, because once we own the property, then he can go out and start having.
I don't see why, if it is done, I don't see why it couldn't be done this. The only reason it couldn't be done this month, when does the city meet? They meet on the first and third.
Third Monday.
Which they just met, so.
This. Yeah, so, and then I don't know what they're doing September second.
The day after Labor Day, probably, so it should meet the third.
Yeah, I mean, I I would think you could have have it done within a week after their next meeting, if if the. Survey is complete, I don't know that Roger might have an update on that, I don't know. I could ask him.
I don't know how much time it takes after they do the onsite part, but usually it'll take longer, but now with the digital stuff, it's pretty quick.
Exactly, yeah.
Cuz I'm just like, I'm utilizing the the master plan opinion of probable cause. To deduct grading sewer, water, underground electric and fencing, and that brings us down to like ninety nine thousand, so I just. I think this is our time to get ourselves set up for the future, um, and I'm still in favor of all those things. So I I just wanted to voice that while we're having the conversation and being mindful of time.
I think it's gonna use ARPA money really, because it's a one-time expense and it's.
It sets it up for then when the building part comes, we have all of the.
Well, we haven't even decided how we're gonna fund that, so I would not be in favor of breaking ground on the facility when you have no financing. Set up for it.
So breaking ground versus grading out a flat surface that you can stockpile your pipes, stockpile your rock, park your.
You can stockpile those things, uh, tubes, whatever. When when the crops are out, stockpiling away, you don't need it graded for that.
Well, with the, in order to develop the plan for the actual facility, depending on the lay of the land, when you start grading, things might have to be. The plan might change, right, and you don't know that until you get in there and get graded.
Cuz they gotta they gotta alter the tile work, so that makes a difference, yeah, it may not be that big a deal, it may be a big, I mean. But we don't even know for sure what we would build or how big a building we would build, because we don't have the financing. What what are we gonna be able to afford? What are we gonna have to pass a bond issue, or are we gonna have? There's not gonna be a bond issue.
So, and it's just, it's, but it's just like.
So what, you're gonna just put it on property tax?
No.
Where where's this money coming from? First of all, it's it's, you do progressive development, you don't have to do everything in one day or one year, and you're gonna have money available from senior village funds. And you're gonna have potentially even some grants or things out of the state, you don't know, so I think it's a matter of doing one step at a time. Once you've got your main building done and you've got your storage there, as far as the. Like on the lean tos, the equipment sheds and all that, they can be elective over time and. Well, on the packet that Casey sent out about all of my expenses, it was a seven and a half, seven point six billion dollar facility that we were gonna build. And that we, you and I, we're gonna spend all the cash down from the county to build it, there was no um. Thing saying that we were gonna build a cheaper building, or we were gonna parcel it out in in different areas.
Right.
It was that, that's that's the thing, cuz we know that those figures are correct, she's had them checked. And so now, well, that that's exactly what you put out.
It's right here, you're right, it's the.
It's that, that's the plan, and so.
Opinion of probable cause, the information that we have to base our.
Okay, so, so as of now.
I'm basing the numbers of grading.
I was talking. I was talking, and you that you put these figures out, and that is the facility we're building. And we're not, there's no plan for what at what stages we're gonna build what. So how are we gonna finance it? None of these issues have been addressed. Your plan did not address them, and now you're gonna break ground, we may, it might be three, four years before we build anything. And we're gonna have a sunflower patch in the middle of a well fenced area. I I can't see where this is a smart, a smart way to go, you don't pour a basement for a house, you don't have funding.
Well, when you build a house, you get your grading done to know the the type of house you can put on the land that.
So how big a facility are we gonna build? Are we gonna build the whole building, are they gonna cut it down, the the bay down uh to cheapen it up?
So we haven't had those discussions yet.
Exactly, because, and that's what I'm saying, we don't know the size of building we're gonna be grading the pad for.
You're gonna be grading the lot.
You're gonna be grading, you're gonna be putting up a your your pad for your building and everything.
We're not to the pad stage, we're just grading the area so that you can fence it off and.
Sunflowers.
Okay, well, I'm.
We got anoxus weed uh group in our county, we provided care of that.
Well, and I guess to my point on the ARPA discussion, we have a timeline and an amount of money, so I just wanted to make sure that. I believe that the grading, the sewer, the water, the underground electric and the fencing should come out of our allotted three sixty five we have left. And just to make sure, because each week we have new things and the air conditioner today and and different things that we're talking about, I just wanna make sure that. You know, even if you put it in here like we did with some of the things, like we haven't paid for the graphic panel all the way, but if we could. Agree or get to a point where we're forecasting these as our expenses. That we don't spend and then not have room to do these, cuz I I really think it it's smart to get your utilities and your grading. And get it fenced in and then, and then absolutely sit down and start talking about what the building looks like, what the numbers are, where we pay for it from.
I I do agree, I agree with that approach, I do think we gotta help ourselves on on the numbers, because. That engineer's estimate, I mean, I respect what they did, but they've covered themselves on this, that's my estimate.
I agree with that.
I've had a chance to talk to a couple folks and know a lot more about the idea and. We can build for a whole lot less, and to your, yeah, well, maybe we cut it off a bay of it, and we take a bay off, but we make it, we're gonna be added on later if you want. I mean, there's a lot of ways looking at it, but we can definitely, just the interior finishes alone, it make a big difference.
Right.
So I think the bigger conversation now is get the site prepped, get your utilities in. You know, you're ready, now your everything's ready, you get everything onsite you can, and then you can put your building out, get your field out there, get you start storing a lot of things there, so I think. I think there's a lot, and you said, I definitely need to renegotiate our building, that's where local contractors come in.
I think it'd be great.
And probably it does give you a. Right, this is good a building with less money, with maybe some different choices and materials. There's a lot of probies in all of that, because we don't have any of those estimates at the gifts. Well, it's it's a total guess of this economy.
Yeah.
I mean, it's just.
And that's exactly what these guys are doing is guessing, they're giving us an opinion of costs and covering theirselves too, right, of like. I don't wanna give you a low number and then it come in higher and you're like, oh.
Well, there's two things we do know, one is the existing facility is in. But it's out of this life and it needs so much repair or enhancements to even just meet what we should be doing for our employees, let alone the public and our equipment, so. Inevitably, we have to do something. The other thing we know is that number's gonna be accurate for building, we don't build it for another ten years, I guarantee it's gonna be that much. So doing nothing doesn't fix anything, but being too brash and too quick is probably the wrong thing, so I think. Where I'm landing is get the site ready, do what we know we can get done, and let us have a serious conversation and. Um, and decide what building we can afford, and not, and hopefully not have to. Uh, make it a property tax burden, the thing is, this is being done without property tax, it's ARPA money, we know though it's still our money, it's still tax dollars, but. It's what was given to us to do something with, so it's a chance to get a head start on something without property tax.
Well, and that's kind of, I mean, I'm data driven in in my thought process, so if we can set the set the site up for the future. And then come up with a plan working with local contractors of how we achieve, what we need to achieve. I mean, just on these high numbers, you can look across some of it, like new condition shop construction. It matches what our proceeds are, like we can get things done from Senior Village, meaning capital, sell capital, you know, putting it back in. I I'm I'm very optimistic that we can achieve it, it's just we gotta think it through, take our time and ensure that we're working with. With local contractors to achieve it at an affordable cost that. And we can all be proud of it, everybody in this county can be proud of it. It just. This will set us up to determine what the site looks like, where the buildings go, where the, you know, cuz even just from this preliminary. What they brought the first time, then we tweaked it based on, okay, well, if I bring my trucks in this way, you know, once you have the actual site and you go out there, you might change that again, you just. It's it goes in in process of.
Well, yeah, equipment storage buildings, I mean, we've had that conversation, I mean, they've designed some. Really, really high quality metal buildings with steel girders and all this, and. You can, you can do quite well with some of the laminated beams and with poles and and not getting quite so complex, so. I don't know, Joe, I feel like you probably built both of those for half what they've got on there, so things like that. We gotta give our our employees ways to work efficiently in a quality environment where they can actually. Look forward to coming to work and the public can see more efficiencies, especially with rock storage onsite, being able to load out the night before, the next morning. Probably get more roads done in a more efficient way, I think there's a lot of efficiencies for this too.
So the grading, the sewer, the water, the underground electric and the fencing, based on our opinion of probable cause that we got from BG is two hundred and sixty five thousand five hundred. Are we willing to pencil that in to utilize ARPA? I know the timeline, we have to own the ground before Joe can do all the. The bids for those those things, but are we willing to put that in as a line item so that we know that it's gonna be paid for from where?
And surveying's already in there, right, it's right here.
Hmm, yeah, surveying costs eleven six ninety four.
I don't know.
Okay.
I'm okay to put in, there's a placeholder right now until we know more, cuz we'll we'll do a lot more in the next couple of weeks as far as.
I think so too, and I think without a placeholder, I don't want it to get lost, I guess, I don't want it to get. Forgotten.
Will you say that number one more time, please? Two sixty five, five.
Yes. And that was just using this with Kenya probable cause for grading sewer, water, underground electrical and fencing.
So, we're here.
Uh, page thirty two.
You didn't have gravel in there.
No, because he talked about, well, and we, I mean, we don't have the. I think he was gonna negotiate some of that, not that we would need all of it all at once.
That's what you were talking about, that's maybe not doing as much, because he wouldn't have to do it, okay, so we'll get, we'll work for erosion control, we'll place it all graded, we have to regrade it again, so you gotta make sure.
Well.
Get plenty of weeds.
If you want to, yeah. I mean, we could just, we could save the 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 remaining.
I would be do the balance, cuz you may want to put your initial rock down and at least.
I'd sort of. I'd be good with that.
I just think with the balance.
To balance, so that's easier for you.
It's fine.
Okay.
And we know it's gonna change a little bit based on how these other things all come in.
Okay, so we did with ARPA update at that point. Um, we have, I haven't had a chance to look at these expenses, I'll look at them and then pass them over and we can do that part. Do we have any unfinished business?
When does the sheriff come in?
Uh, eleven thirty.
Oh, good.
You have, sorry, you have unfinished business?
Well, I don't know if it's really unfinished, I don't, maybe, I don't know, um, have, I got another. Thing from City of Ashson. Or August Mullen, I didn't know.
Which one you said, but which one?
It's that six seventeen Park Street again.
Six nineteen?
Yeah, six nineteen. This one that was the July one.
The same invoice, yeah.
No, it's a different one, uh, because it says.
How did we find it?
This one was July.
How did we watch it, right? Was that someone out of EMS in the future?
They they merged it into this whole department, so if they they've tried to fold it all together, so it's a, it's hard to follow in your budgets, because it's gonna be.
Yeah, that was. Well, cuz that's what I was just wondering if it was coded correctly, because they have it coming out of Emergency Mansion.
Well, we changed for next year's budget, this year.
Oh, this year, okay, no, thank you for that, cuz I'm like, I'm still on what happened, you know?
Yeah.
And so, yeah, nope, that's.
So it's gonna be clubs.
I've done that.
Until next year.
Next year too, because we tried to comp from the previous year, so.
Okay, thank you, I, yeah.
Mark, how are we doing on the Senior Village transition with all the different payments and things like that and?
Well. So there's not a lot of payments coming in. Because a lot of them are private pay. So our building company doesn't bill private pay, they just bill for the insurance companies, so it would be on our responsibility to get the private pays billed. They have continually still actively build the insurance companies for those back ones, um, but just not getting payment.
Are we ready to go to the next step?
Good. I've asked for the aging report, as soon as we get that, I'm gonna give it to Pat, um, so that we know who to move forward. Yeah, that's pretty much up the next step.
It'd be nice to move on that, even the next meeting or two, so we can get, uh, I'll, I'll try to, as best as possible, wrap it up, put it into the year, at least know where we're heading.
Have we ever talked about the meeting on the R and R meeting and the budget meeting for September third? Were we starting at, what time were we starting that?
Four thirty, I thought I put up my calendar.
That's what I have, yes.
So. Are we coming in that day at regular time and waiting till four thirty?
No.
We can.
That was a quick no, no.
No, that's what I'm going.
You go to.
I don't know if we discussed what that meeting's gonna look like. That's the day I wanna have some relative die over. Okay.
Oh, boy.
But, I mean, what's that meeting, are we gonna start that portion of it four thirty, we gonna start our whole meeting at four thirty?
We started one last year, I feel like we started at one.
Oh, I think you remedies up before that.
Yeah, I'm pretty positive we started at one and then.
But if we don't have much on the agenda, maybe meet at two or two thirty, try to. Adjust when our starting time is. See, I probably won't be here next week because of that meeting in Brown County, so you guys. May wait till next week to set that meeting, or is that too late? Let's get it set, let's let's decide. So the R and R hearing starts at four thirty. And everything else is adjusted.
And last year wasn't like, so R and R, nobody really had anything much there, because they didn't really understand it, so we made the motion, we approved it. And then budget, that's where the discussion happened of like, okay, what's, okay.
Yes, we'll do, we'll do a roll call at that time too, I mean, roll call for the votes as well.
Um, just a heads up and a reminder, they sent this to us last year in our budget meeting, and I just had a gentleman ask me again this morning. On understanding the revenues as well, so that we can have that discussion when we're talking about the budget hearing of just. Where the revenues come in and how they offset it.
Yeah, I think it's quite a, a good example is like when, uh, the revenue coming from, say EMS, actually goes to the general budget. So it's, it's.
And don't offset any of these own budget.
It offsets it indirectly.
But now the sheriff, his stays in his department, correct? So, I mean, it, and each one is different.
So if you could kinda have those two hundred plus to do that.
They'll have a resolution as well.
What time should we start that evening?
What does the agenda look like, Michelle, so far?
For the twenty-seventh?
For the third?
Uh, the third, um, that, that's all I have.
Just R and R?
The R and R and the budget hearing, um, and potentially ARPA update. Nothing else on.
So I think it. I think it'd be nice to have the information of what we'll have that evening, um, that way we can recap ourselves. And predict any questions, because we kind of, I feel like we'll know exactly kind of where and. What the questions are. But just so, cause last year, we didn't wanna put anyone on the spot, right? So we took the feedback of like. I, it would be interesting to know what the revenues are, or you know, and all those things, which I think we all have notes from last year. Of just kind of making sure that we. Were achieving their, you know. The feedback we got last year, like trying to work forward. Cause last year was the first year we had a lot of people, which is great. I mean, I think it was great.
I'm not hearing much this year.
Uh, the only thing I heard is when they would receive R and Rs, which they were mailed last week, right? So they would receive them this week.
Yeah, yeah, I forgot that question, other than that. So which should we start? Ooh, I don't know.
Unless there's a whole bunch added to the agenda, I think two would be fine, if there's a lot, then we get back into one, but. Tentatively two.
So you think I start the meeting on the third at two, and then at four thirty, have the R and R budget hearing, and then.
Well, that gets people out of time, so get home for dinner or whatever they gotta do, or somebody, it's late enough, the hearing is, people still get there, so. That's kind of that balance trend strike, I guess.
There won't be a workshop, correct, that day? We just started to with regular business.
We were talking about. That R and R hearing date, they're they're starting immediately at two. The new workshop, and then have the R and R at four thirty.
Say there's, is there much on the agenda other than that?
Approving minutes from the week before. Um, and then ARPA update if.
Should we have a thirty-minute workshop, maybe, just, yes, in case somebody has questions?
It's about an hour workshop, because I don't think, that's still gonna be three, that's gonna be an hour and a half.
I know.
A regular meeting time.
Which we may not need, throughout Labor Day, it's gonna be, I bet it's a slow agenda. I'd be okay with two to three workshop and then three o'clock.
I think it's gonna be loads of time.
I believe so. I never knew you may be in session on something, something could pop up.
Um, okay, so we also have in this, in my folder today, that we got a letter from the City of Ashson. On N Street. Um, dear Board of County Commissioners, the Ashson Land Bank intends to sell the following properties, and then they give. The properties, um, legal descriptions, twenty twenty-four county appraiser. Property valuation, twenty-four hundred and fifty dollars, the property is owned R one, single family. The property is adjacent to your property at N, at, in six, North Sixth Street. Um, quick reference, R ten ninety-two. Um, so they've been notifying us of that. Maybe the new owner wants to buy it north. It's just North Sixth Street with a quick ref. Which Pat's looking up.
Yeah, I don't wanna say too much, but I know we're sufficiently bought up over there, and we may wanna sell ours too.
Well, we had already asked that. Yes, sir. We already asked the, um. The city land bank if they would be interested in them, so, but that was with Amy, and we never really got.
Well, and there's somebody else's boss stuff.
Yeah, so I think that would be really good to look at. Cause that would be one of them that didn't settle our tax bill, right? I don't know why they wouldn't have put Senior Village as the address, though.
Well, across the street there, which can destroy society and stuff, there's someone by there maybe.
Work isn't working. Well, I switched to Google Chrome, cause it's sometimes faster, but it doesn't seem to be. Any faster.
Add into something different. I'm really curious what it is. The college is, several things up there. Unity and six, about the old school and land worth of that. Partial sitting there attempting. Michelle, back over those, we initially, the appraiser. Those modifications.
Oh, that's, that should be in the blue folder.
Yeah, I was just moving back through those again, if you don't mind.
Can you? Sorry, I was page.
That's what I was referencing earlier. Are you looking for a specific one?
Yeah, but there's.
Bunch of.
Yeah.
So when I asked the appraiser about that, she thought they had actually. Went to vote in four and were turned down, but they probably didn't have something.
Yeah.
Correct, and like in the nonprofit, so.
Okay, so that's, that's, that seemed kinda like.
That's, I'm sure that that's, that's been.
Sometimes you have to decipher that stuff, okay, yes, so these three are land. That's in those blocks of old. Let's go. But the hospital does now. Yeah, this is.
Yeah, Thursday, oh, three twenty.
You want these kept separate?
So that's three different. So Harp is part of that, so that's, that's part of the hospital.
Are you gonna keep it here for the other one? I thought it was very big, right?
County was. Uh, the top organization in the blood center in twenty twenty-three. I thought it looked nice on your. Hello, really, but everyone's here, you wanna do, um, non-alien personnel executive session, thirty minutes, commission, HR, county attorney.
Save the commissioners.
HR, county attorney, thirty minutes. No, we don't have anything.
Hey, almost the board of county commissioners recessed an executive session. At eleven twenty-seven, to discuss personnel matters of non-elected personnel is allowed by KSA seventy-five dash. Four three one nine V one, and that's the purpose of the closed session is to protect the privacy rights of the employee. And that the board come out of executive session in thirty minutes in the commission room of the courthouse basement. And this present will be the three commissioners, HR and the county attorney.
I'll say.
Okay, it's been moved to second, and all those in favor say aye. Okay, we are back in open session, um, and made our way down to county counselor updates.
I don't have anything this week.
Uh, any need for an executive session? Hearing none, do you have a motion to approve the expenses from this week?
So moved.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye. Passes through zero. Um, so we have an hour and a minute left. We just want to adjourn into workshop instead here for an hour, or is there anything else? I mean. I mean, I'm fine, I don't have anything, I can stay.
And I may leave.
Yeah, you're not feeling well, you.
I got some things to add here.
All right, so I may, uh, look for, oh, sorry, public comment, if there's any public comment, seeing none, look for a motion, uh, to adjourn. Eleven fifty-nine, and I will be here till one.
I'm sure in the meeting.
Okay, move to second, and all those in favor say aye.